I'm going to go ahead and get the meeting started. For those in the audience, the, this is the first meeting of the planning commission of the year, so they need to reord. I'm going to actually take them up to the point which they elect their chair. So, but we'll go ahead and get started. So I call the meeting to order. Heather, will you please do the roll call, please?
Yeah. Mr. Edward?
Present.
Mr. Weiner?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Mr. Guy?
You.
Mr. Winterhalter?
Here.
Mr. Evan?
Here.
And we have a new board member, Ms. McGowan, who is not available this evening.
All right. With that, if we'll have a moment of silence and then the pledge. Let's please stand for the pledge. You had before you your agenda for this evening, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's six to zero. We'll, now we'll take nominations for the election of your chair. Typically, I think we've been doing this, that we take one nomination if there's a second, and then you vote up and down of whether you want that person. So, any nomination for chair?
Mr. Neese, it would be my honor to nominate Curtis Silva as the chairman of the planning commission for the next ensuing year.
I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So V?
Thanks, folks.
Congratulations, you can go ahead and move over and let, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
For the next position, we have vice chair, do we have any nomination?
Mr. Chairman, it would be my honor to nominate Simone Guy as the vice chairman of the planning commission for the next ensuing year.
For the second?
Second.
All in favor of Mr. Guy as vice chairman? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Simone.
Thank you. Both live again. All right.
And then we have secretary, we have nomination for secretary. Lizanne McGowan?
Lizanne McGowan, I'll nominate.
For a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so we have minutes. December twenty second, did we have any comments? I know we, I almost saw an email, there was a re, some comments. We have a new set, we have a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes?
Wait a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from December twenty second, say aye?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain, I was not present at the meeting.
All opposed? Minutes approved? We have a couple of plan reviews. If Veronica doesn't mind, we'd like to move the veterans memorial up for some scheduling, if that's okay with you. Swap you guys around? Great, so then we'll start with the veterans memorial.
Yes, good evening, may please, planning commission, my name is Mark Tamico, and I have the privilege tonight to represent the Joyport Newtown Village LP and Delaware County Veterans Memorial Association in Newtown Square. Sitting, seated in the front row there is Rick Stratton, who's the project civil engineer. And there are various representatives of the veterans memorial association that we'll introduce in a moment. So, as you've seen from the plan, the applicant is proposing a modest sixteen hundred fourteen square foot meeting hall that will be situated adjacent to the existing veterans memorial. And what we would propose to do would be to have Nicole Robinson, Chief Joe Daley, who's the president, and then Ralph Galante come up here and just give you a very brief overview about the intended purpose of the building. And while they're doing that, I'll hand out a architectural rendering that was prepared by Glenn Gauza, who's the architect for the project. And then after that, we'll have Rick review the township engineer review letter, copy which I'm sure you have. Is that all right?
Sounds good.
Sounds good, thank you.
Hi, everybody. First, I want to say thank you to the township. You've been very welcoming to the veterans memorial and all of our changes that we've done there. It has been an honor, my father, it's been his dream to honor our veterans and to make us never forget of their sacrifices that them and their families make for our freedom. So the project has come and it just kept growing. We really got a great response from the community. And we want to do the final phase, which is to create a veterans hall. What we realize that's missing here is an inside location where we can have cultural activities, meeting points for our veterans, and a place for them to get together. So, what I would like to do is ask Chief Daley and Ralph Galati to come up to speak from their vision just for a moment. But I'd also just like to say thank you to our board and our veterans that are here to support us. They come to every, everybody is so wonderful, coming to every event, every meeting. And it just, it just shows the strength of our freedom and why we're here, we're just lucky, so thank you.
Good evening, board members, my name is Joe Daley, I'm the current president of the Delaware County Veterans Memorial. I know everybody in this room has been there at some point. It's more than bricks and mortar. I'm a combat veteran from Vietnam, served two tours in Vietnam. I'm here to speak on behalf of all veterans, those currently serving, those deceased, and especially those who made the ultimate sacrifice. This is more than just a stone and mortar out there to us, that is hollow ground. I go out there and I can actually feel the presence of the guys I served with who didn't come home. I can feel them there. We have many things out there with education, we want to make sure that the children get educated and know what the sacrifices are, that their freedoms were earned on the backs of the veterans, not by anybody else. So all the freedoms they enjoyed, we want them to understand where that comes from. We run educational programs out there. Second Sunday of every month, we run, from April through November, we do a flag ceremony where we honor those who are brothers and sisters that have passed in their service to our country. So, what we desperately need is a place for veterans to meet. We can bring in the veterans administration to hold seminars and benefit classes there. There's a desperate need for that, your Newtown Square smelly button post is looking for space, they don't have the space to meet. The Newtown, Marville Newtown BFW has their place to be. This would be an ideal place for them to meet. You know, and we want to continue that educational component out there. And this board and the previous boards here have shared their Debaton vision of that. Who gives that kind of real estate out there? Most memorials you see are hidden somewhere in background or ground that's not of any use to anybody. This is right out in front of the public eye, it's a beautiful place, I will put it on par with anything you've seen in Washington DC. With one exception, we're, no taxpayer dollars we're that, that's all donated by veterans and patriots. So I'll turn it over to Ralph Galati.
Thank you. Nick, Ralph Galati, Air Force veteran, thanks for the opportunity. The other thing, a couple of things I wanted to mention about the purpose. We're really glad that this facility is in Newtown Square, because it's kind of centrally located in Delaware County, which really helps a lot. There are a lot of veterans organizations that are going on hard times, and some of those chapters and lodges and posts may close. So this will be a nice convenient meeting spot for them, but also it could be serving as a museum. They, like teammates mentioned, educational opportunities for schoolchildren and for others. But also the fact that it will give us a chance to consolidate some veterans activities that we don't normally get. One thing that Delaware County is missing is we don't have a veterans VA presence. We have the clinic right next door, but we don't have a veteran service organization or a vet center or anything like that. We are served by facilities that are in Chester County or Philadelphia. And this will be a nice meeting spot, folks have already expressed an interest in having periodic but regular events and meetings where they can do veterans benefits, veterans counseling, suicide prevention. There are purposes even outside, either in Philly that love to have a presence in Delaware County. And they can come here on a weekly or monthly basis and schedule times for folks that can't make it into the city. So there are a number of opportunities that we think this facility could serve, not just the community, but our veterans, and we appreciate very much your support, thank you.
Thank you, so Rick is gonna, Rick Stratton is gonna introduce him and review, have him review the plan review letter by Noni. And before doing that, I just want to make two quick comments. One was, and this has to do with the first couple of comments under zoning in Eric's letter. The first is, he was just looking for clarification that what we are seeking is a recommendation of approval for phase one of the plan. Phase two, and Rick will review that with you in a moment, but to be very clear, we're only seeking a recommendation as to phase one, no action is required on phase two, that would be a future land development application that would have to be filed with township. The other is just to comment on zoning comments two and three as it relates to setback. So, the setback line from West Chester Pike is a hundred and fifty feet. And then the setback line from Alice Grim Boulevard is twenty feet. And that is because the property was zoned to be and is intended to be developed as a integrated lifestyle village. And to that end, so the marble property is approximately fifty five point nine acres. And it has been approved as a preliminary plan, as an overall plan by the board supervisors way back when in two thousand and eight. And then more recently in two thousand and nineteen, some of you may remember, there was a hotel application for the interior of the site. And at that time, the applicant's engineer again put together an overall view, and that's the light gray area that you see in the background. So, we are, our, our position, which we're comfortable with from a zoning standpoint, is that the applicable setbacks are a hundred and fifty feet from West Chester Pike and then twenty feet from Alice Grim Boulevard. We have not had an opportunity to review that in detail with the, with township, but we'll be happy to do that in, in the near future. So I didn't, I didn't want to, we can have dialogue if you want to, but I didn't, you know, I wanted to be clear, we haven't had a chance to sit down with Andy, Eric, and Rich, or Steve, or anybody, so. But, in any event, that's the way, that's the way the application is put together. So, aside from that, Rick, if you want to review the plan with the planning commission and then the comment letter. Good evening, planning commission, my name is Rick Stratton, I'm the project engineer for this application. As Mark had mentioned, we did receive a review letter. I just want to walk real quickly through the overall plan, which is shown on the screen here. This is Marville, which is a planned lifestyle village. And the phase that is being posed as part of this application is the construction of a meeting hall for the veterans, as well as the associated parking for that meeting hall. And with that, there's an access drive that's being constructed as well. So that shows up in the Darfur Bold lines in the in the southwest quadrant of Marville, at the intersection of Alice Grim and West Chester Pike. Currently, there's a veterans memorial there, the Hall of Prayers, and there's a little bit of parking as well. But this plan will introduce a meeting hall and additional parking and the access drive as phase one. And a future phase, which will be shown on sheet three B of the plan, shows some other future parking in this quadrant and an office building. We show that here because we want everyone to understand that this is the ultimate vision for this quadrant of Marville. And that we are also building some infrastructure to prepare for that in the future, including stormwater management. So this application is not proposing to build all of this radial parking, nor is it proposing to build the large office building as part of phase two. But we are just simply proposing to build the meeting hall. Some of the radial parking, it's thirty seven parking spaces. And then the access drive, which would continue out onto Alice Grim Boulevard, giving the site two points of access to Alice Grim. There's an existing drive there now, we're going to build a second one. And this drive will be able to be navigated by emergency vehicles if necessary. And as I mentioned, the stormwater management that we're constructing with this first phase will accommodate the future parking and the larger office building. Even though we're not building the office and all of the parking now, we want to build the stormwater infrastructure to be prepared for that in the future. For the larger Marville vision, there are other uses being conceived here. This plan doesn't ask for approval for any of those, but we show them in light gray for context. The hotel, retail, restaurants, there are other future plans here, which will likely be subject of future applications. So, that's, that's sort of the context of the overall plan and the phase that we are proposing right now. And we received review letters from the township's engineer and the township's fire marshal. We did not yet receive a letter, or I did not yet receive a letter from the township arborist. So perhaps that will come at a later date. And I just wanted to highlight some of the comments in the engineer letter tonight. We will comply with all of these comments. I will say that right now. And some of the ones Mark has already touched on, just clarification that this site is zoned under the lifestyle village zoning, which means that there's a twenty foot setback from Alice Grim Boulevard. The proposed building here, the sixteen hundred square foot building, is twenty one feet away from Alice Grim Boulevard. It's also more than one hundred and fifty feet away from West Chester Pike, so we feel it's zoned appropriately here. That's, that's one of the, that's one of the larger comments I wanted to get into. The other one I wanted to touch on as well was sewer. This, this building will be served by public sewer when it goes online. It cannot be served by public sewer now, it's not online. And in order to construct the parking and the associated stormwater management for this section of the site, that infrastructure is being installed where there's currently onsite sewer treatment for for the Newtown Business Center, which is right next door. So, stormwater management infrastructure cannot be installed without taking that offline. So, we understand that, and, and we understand that when the sewer does go online through this area, that's, that's when we get the green light and that's when we can begin construction. So we understand that there's, there might be a time, we have to wait for that sewer to come online.
You can't build it for sewers online?
That's correct, we cannot build the stormwater management, and much of the grading will happen where there's an existing onsite sanitary sewer for this section of Marville and the business center right next door.
Is there bathroom facilities in this structure?
There will be, yes.
Did I do that right?
Yes.
So is your entire phase one of the project on hold until it is completed?
Until public sewer is online, yes, sir.
How long are our approvals good in the township? I know the city's three years. I'm just asking, you know, if, you know, they're in, in front of us. How long if someone gets approvals, development approvals, is there, is it five years? Five years?
Yes.
And what's the timing of the sewer that the people are thinking?
If you'd like, I can probably answer that. So, the the pump station for this area is actually already in. It has been installed, what we are missing right now is running the electric to the pump station as well as access for the daily maintenance. We have, we have a temporary easement that would allow us to get the electric in if the permanent situation isn't resolved shortly. And we've had conversations with the Debatons about a temporary access as well while we're waiting for the permanent one to be done. So I, I think we're talking potentially months, maybe as much as six or seven. There is some issues that are in the court today, but we're, I think we have some options to get this more quickly.
Okay.
Is this the pump station that we discussed a month or two ago?
I don't know what station you all discussed a couple of months, it's the one, the one at the golf course, yes, that's the one.
Yes, that's the one we're waiting for. There was only two or three other comments in here that I did want to highlight, again, these are all, will comply. Just to clarify that we are building a, a small retaining wall, about six feet is the max height along Alice Grim Boulevard in order to achieve the grading we need to. So I just wanted to make that clarification, that will be built with phase one. And that will, we will prepare erosion and sediment control plan. And we will get a NIPs permit, which is required from the, from the Delaware County Conservation District. And we will get all of the outside approvals that are needed. So that, that was really what I wanted to touch on from the comment letter here. There's nothing too substantial in the fire marshal review letter, this is pretty standard, and again, these are all will comply, certainly. So if the commission pleases, I'll take questions, if you have questions about the design, the phasing, the intent, or some of the comments here, I'd be happy to answer them, please.
You're seeking preliminary and final approval tonight on this application?
Yes.
But you can't move forward with it, why is it necessary to do preliminary and final if it's going to require some months to be allowed to construct?
Well, if one of the conditions of approval would be that sewer is available, I think that would be appropriate way to word that.
What we need to see a plan showing where the sewer is going?
Yes, we will show where the sewer lateral will tie in, there's sewer infrastructure out here for us to tie into.
But does that need to be approved, when, I guess is my question?
On the plan, there's, there's one of the comments, they'll have to be demonstrating the full sanitary sewer connection.
Perhaps they should prepare that plan before. I mean, is it on the current plan?
I think you have, there's, there's some of the existing sanitary sewers on there, but the plan as presented right now does not have the utility connections. That's one of the review comments.
We will have a lateral connection that runs alongside Alice Grim and will tie into an existing manhole.
But this plan is not yet showing, correct?
That's correct. Do we approve plans like this? Doesn't seem like we do.
Yeah, I don't think that the plan is not complete, at least should be complete for full approval. If, all we are discussing is preliminary approval, we may be able to live with that. But the plan is not complete.
Because we want to pivot. Well, then, if, if the, if the planning commission is more comfortable with a preliminary approval, we would certainly seek that in lieu of a preliminary final, and we withdraw the waiver request.
Preliminary approval with final contingent on showing everything.
Sure, yes.
I have another question here, the, so the entire site Is on for a lifetime. With all the setbacks is the does it leave a story office standing in phase two? Meet the the standards of that zoning?
Yes, it does. It is. Appropriately set back from Westchester Pike and Alice Grim. And the site has. You know, plenty of capacity impervious wise and building coverage wise if. Phase two were on this application. We show it on the plan just for reference. But we're not going to build it and we'll come back for a separate. Approval for phase two, the office building.
And you're showing by right marking. On that.
On the office building?
Yeah, to support fifty thousand square feet.
I believe so, yes, yes. But again, we've come back for. With a separate application for that. Tonight, we're asking for thirty seven parking spaces. And. The building for the meeting hall.
Do you have a time estimate when you will come back with phase two?
I don't.
On that phase two, I. If I'm seeing viewing this correctly, I see the gray shaded areas right here. Which are reflecting phase two buildings?
No.
What yeah, what is this?
The gray shaded area you're pointing to, Mr. Evans, is the stormwater management.
Okay.
Or. That we're going to build with phase one, but that stormwater management will accommodate phase two.
Is that stormwater management related design detail?
On this, on this application, yes.
For including phase two, but.
It has capacity for phase two and we will, we will. Very carefully define that on the plan that. How much impervious area that system will handle, just so that in future applications, there's a, there's a way to. Track it.
The installation will be in phase one for infiltration?
Yes, sir.
So it is infiltration was tested already?
Yes.
And the system is designed with invert elevation sizes, et cetera, right?
That's correct.
Eric, did you have any? Comments on the letter you thought should be brought out that? They've not brought up. I mean, you don't have to. I'm just asking.
No, I believe that the comments actually I had boxed up for discussion was with regards to the zoning, which I discussed, and then also the interaction of how. The sanitary sewer will work because the exist, the proposed development is in the. On lot septic systems that currently support the buildings in the area. That was the primary items that I brought up. The rest are. Relatively technical in general nature. I said one question while I had it. If you brought the rendering for the building, can you just explain? I know there's like a front entrance is facing the parking lot. What are these like? Lower level doors.
In the back of the building, I said, I call it the back of the building, but it's the western face. Of the proposed building. That short face is. Adjacent to Alice Grim Boulevard. There will be some access doors to the lower level of the building there to a. Facilities room. And. And a small basement for storage of chairs and tables and such.
Based on what you know, the site. The review letter says that steep, uh, steep slopes haven't been identified and disturbance error. Calculations provided, or are you expecting any issues there?
No, because the steep slope that exists on the site were manmade. And we have plans which show. The topography of this site. From many years ago versus where it's at today, and I can, I can. Prove that the steep slopes that were disturbing with this development were all manmade steep slopes.
Now, you mentioned that the existing sanitary system, disposal system of the. Office complex across the street. Is inside that area. Now, is phase one going over apart and all of that? Facilities?
Enough of it that. I don't know that there's any part of it that we could.
So that is phase one also, not just phase two.
Phase one will remove the existing sanitary sewer treatment on this site.
Any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for preliminary approval. Of the. Decounts. Where Veterans Memorial Meeting Hall. By the applicant. Subject to the conditions that have been stated that will comply with all of the engineering. Requirements for the engineer's letter. And that there be a effectively a waiver of any time restrictions. If there's going to be some type of. Delay in obtaining the requisite. Approvals, the sewer approvals. So, I mean, I don't think that this will be done in a hundred and twenty days, so I think that will have an issue there, but as long as that's going to be waived.
I think they get five years.
Well, that's after approval. So we can give a preliminary approval. Subject to the conditions, they'll have to come back for their final approval. Giving a preliminary approval and final approval, I'm not exactly certain what the timeframe is with the application being filed. Gaining final approval. Once the application is filed, we have a timeframe to approve the entire application, but if there's going to be. Extended time to get their approvals, they would implicitly have to give extensions of that requirement. Under the empty.
And I would like to add or amend the motion that to say that the the final approval will be conditioned upon the submission of the final plan. Showing showing the sewer and anything else required by the engineer.
I mean, presumably they can. Come back next month with a plan that checks all our boxes. If it gets approved. Good for five years.
Their approval, yes.
Right.
But but there is another subject. No, they they have to apply for the NPDs permit. And that one has a timeframe of five years, but. That includes a construction period. You may not want to make that application too early. If you are delayed anyhow. So maybe it will work in your favor if you wait with the final approval until you know the timeframe of the sewer. Installation and all that.
Yeah, we can discuss that, but I think. We. We would like. Final approval. With a condition that sewer becomes available and we will sit and wait for that process to play out. And and as soon as sewer becomes available. Hopefully that's before the five years is up. We'll be ready to go.
So you're willing to make that bet on your side? Yes, that's you're taking responsibility for that. Months away. The applicant is anxious to have the approvals in place so that when sewer comes online. Reinitiate the process of coming back.
Calculated. Has have you done any planning as far as sewer capacity as of yet?
I mean, this building here. There's one.
Right, one EDU. But but I think some of the problems that Eric and I discussed during the, you know, Eric's review. Was the fact that the lifestyle village has to be designed comprehensively. And that's why I think we, you you saw the note, the comment and the review letter. So we want to make sure that.
That should be.
Things are designed comprehensively so we don't have a problem as you approve plans, we don't have. The proper information in front of us. So. That, I mean, I certainly if the board is favorable to a preliminary approval, I think it should be. Predicated on. Making things more comprehensively laid out. So. You know, we meet the goals of the ordinance as far as lifestyle village.
I have another question regarding the sewer. What about the connection? Once the sewer is available and so on, what about the connection of the office? Center to the sewer? Is that?
I I think that the capacity of the sewer is built in. To the sewer system when we increase the size of the sewer system. I think the thing that's in question today, which. I'm hearing the applicant say that they're willing to take the risk and. It's saying this. They 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 hold some of the keys to helping us. Get the sewer hooked up. The the capacity is there. So when we, when we expanded the system. And we did the thirty three million dollar build out that was taking place in eighteen, nineteen and twenty. That. That part of that covered this particular area of. Of the of this development. It included the. What we would call the light industrial area that where the. District Court, I think there's a like a goodwill, there's a, there's a.
Post office.
The post office. All of that was included in that. System that was put in, the piping that's there. It's ready, it's in the ground. It literally is an issue of. When can we get the pump station up and operational? And I would, and I don't want to play out on where the, where all this could go, but I would say that the applicant has. Has an opportunity to make that happen. As quickly as they would want based on some of the conversations I've had with the applicant. We we do have a situation. Where we have another property owner who's involved. But we could do a temporary solution bypassing that other temporary that that if we needed to.
But the physical connection of the office center to the sewer exists already, right?
No, well, the physical connection. Let me say the potential for the physical connection does. It's not connected today.
Right, is there a manhole? In place that they.
There is a, I believe there's a stub in place. I'm not the engineer who did it. But my understanding is there's a stub in place that they could literally. Once we get the pump station up and operational, it would literally be a matter of how long it takes them to get a contractor in. And to fill out the application with the township to get it connected. And and do it and pay the tapping fees that are required for that connection.
Okay, so they they shouldn't lay new piping and all that. That's already.
My understanding is really the, just like any homeowner that's connected. They would have to lay the piping from wherever their system is now to connect. To that spot. I don't know how many feet that is. Specifically in that area. My guess is the applicant could probably tell us faster than I can. They 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 know that and but it's there. It's a matter of connection and they can, they can move forward. The the only thing that's holding it up right now is we've got a pump station that's built that doesn't have electric to it. We've got to get the electric to it and then we have to have access to service it.
You see that as a relatively.
The pump station. The pump station sits on the applicant's property. So they.
They're in control of the.
Their their interests are there, so if they wish to help make it go faster, they can help make it go faster. I mean, so it, I think that, I don't think. I don't know that I think you need to be as concerned about their ability to hook up is my point. I think that it's there. I I'm hoping I'm not saying anything that the applicant would disagree with, but.
Everything Mr. Nice said is is accurate. The the pump station that would service this. This area sits on the applicant's other property. The golf course. And it's just a matter of of getting electric and and an access road to that pump station. And there's.
Why hasn't happened so far?
There's a legal issue with a with a with a adjoining with another property owner with the access road.
Are you in control of that legal issue?
We are not in in control of. The road that is proposed on. The other, the other property owners.
Part of the road is on super.
Yeah. Control.
They're not, they're not, they're not technically in control, but the applicant in the past has given us a temporary easement. To run the electric that would be on their property. Across their own property. My my guess is if we went back to the applicant, they would reissue that easement. I can't say they would. I've had conversations with them, but they have, there is a way if the applicant wanted to move forward more quickly that we could do it. That's my.
Well, will there be any part of the. System that needs to be built to serve this building that we're looking at tonight? That will be publicly dedicated or is it all lateral to something that's already there or?
My understanding is that the. The publicly owned piece is already owned by the public. There's no need to do that. I. I believe the rest of what would be put in would be owned by the applicant.
During this building. So is there any other than engineering? Is there any reason why that, why you can't show that on a plan relatively? Quickly?
We will, we will make that revision to the plan and address the rest of these comments and resubmit.
Yeah, I think that. Feels like what people like.
But we would ask for. We want preliminary approval tonight, yes.
Maybe before we move one other question. So the overall aggregate plan was approved when? Two thousand eight? Did I hear you say earlier?
If there was. There was an overall. Plan that was approved way back in two thousand eight. And again, it was just a.
How long does that approval last?
That approval lasts for five years. So but the 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 point was, it just, again, just to take a step back.
So what happened in two thousand thirteen?
Historically, what happened was that the applicant. Worked with township to create this zoning district for this property and adjacent properties. And in in doing that, the township wanted to see. How the property would be laid out. They wanted to see essentially an overall sketch plan of what what this. What the vision of the developer looked like at the time. That plan was considered as part of the ordinance to rezone the property and of course, the property was rezoned, C two district. What is now and has been in effect since about two thousand eight. But the property was never developed in accordance with that plan. But the the point, the only point I was making was that the township and the developer have. Consistently looked to develop the property as a lifestyle built, which really just impacts. The technical issue of what's the appropriate setback from Alice Grim Boulevard. That's really the point.
I'm saying the approved plan, though. Was in oh eight.
That's correct.
And we are beyond five years.
Correct, yeah, that plan can't be, can't be built any longer.
So the overall aggregate plan. From a timeline perspective, what are the issues there?
A lot of it had to do with 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 sewer.
So the holdup on the balance of the plan, do you have to come back? To get certain reapprovals on this project?
It will probably redesign.
Not phase one, I'm saying the balance of the. And what I'm getting at is, does that affect this sewer capacity in some way?
No. The sewer.
If you know what's going to come into the aggregate project.
Well, they have to meet what is allowed, what is available.
Based upon. A plan that was approved that is now out of five years.
I don't know how many.
So when the when the sewer was built. There was a certain number of EDUs that were allocated.
Right.
For this project.
Right.
Okay, I I don't know off the top of my head what those number of EDUs is. I can tell you it's more than what will be used in this one building. So I mean, so I mean, I can tell you that, right? So but what if you're, if you're asking what the total number of EDUs are, I don't know that off the top of my head. I mean, that is information that we could get. And and no. But the.
I think that just kind of ties to what the fellow board members were bringing up earlier.
Okay.
But but suffice it to say, the allocation for the Marvel property and I don't know the exact number of EDU either is. Substantial and it's. It is in contemplation of the overall lifestyle village development. And but all we're doing tonight is is focusing on the sixteen hundred square foot building that Rick said is. Probably one. EDU. But there and and again, it's be. Crystal clear. Not not, we are not seeking anything else, including the one office building that is shown just because it's in this. You know, direct area. We thought that would be of interest to the members of the planning commission, but. Each and every phase. Other than this one applicant, the one building on this application would need to go through the entire land development process, starting with. A plan, planning, application, planning commission, and whether that is. One submission or multiple submissions. That, you know, sort of remains to be seen.
Chairman, I'll renew my motion to. Prove preliminarily this plan and. Subject to the conditions that Mr. Stratton has indicated and. Subject to the conditions that Mr. Stratton has indicated and I, I think we can move forward on a preliminary basis.
Give a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Preliminary granted?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next up? You're still up, I think?
Uh, yeah, uh, good evening, GM, please, planning commission, Mark Demico, and uh, this time representing Aronim Golf Club. And with me tonight is Brett McKay of the same Chester Valley Engineers. He's the project civil engineer for this project. So um. We'll pour you with the details. I mean, I think you all have seen the plan before, but just as a quick uh, recap. Uh, we filed the phase two plan and the preliminary final plan in two, in October. We presented that plan to you at the November meeting. Um, specifically at that point, John Cluver, the project architect was here. So we gave you a little um. Uh, overview uh, with some nice watercolors of what the pool would look like and uh, what the uh, the, the racket center improvements would look like. At that time, we did not have a county planning review and we did not have a review from the township engineer. So fast forward and we've got a county planning uh, recommendation of approval from December with essentially no comments. And we did receive right before Christmas, a township engineer review letter uh, from Eric Johnson. And it's uh, tonight, uh, the focus of what we would propose to do would be to uh. To present responses and essentially. A will comply. Uh, just by way of just a little uh, background for the board. Planning Commission recommended approval of phase one back in the, the spring. We uh, uh, obtained board supervisors' approval of the phase one plan as a preliminary final plan in July. And pleased to report that after several months waiting for an NPDES permit. Uh, which we successfully got right before Christmas. Uh, the plans have been finalized, they've been executed. Got land development financial security agreements executed and a letter of credit. Delivered to the township and we'll be recording the plans uh, tomorrow. Uh, and uh, there's already been a, a pre-construction meeting out at the Aronim Golf Club last Friday. So. Wanted to take the time to thank the planning commission for all their help with phase one. Um, and with uh, everybody else at the township, including uh, Andy, Eric and Heather for their efforts to get us to this point. So. Uh, we look forward to a smooth development process for phase one. And again, shifting back to tonight, now that we have a review letter, uh, I'll just ask Brett to review. Uh, review the responses. Now, I'll, I'll mention, sorry. So the, the, the one issue, and Brett's going to review this in a little more detail going through it. Um. The, the uh, stormwater management, one of the stormwater management facilities. That is near the pool and associated with phase two. Uh, is in an area of steep slope. So um, we did not need any steep slope conditional use approval. In the phase one plan, Ron Mc has uh, sought and obtained. Conditionally approval. There's less steep slopes on the property. Uh, there's a golf, golf store, a golf. Park storage barn that was developed in two thousand five and then that got, that needed some steep slope conditional uh, approval. And then in the golf maintenance facility that was built about. Eight or nine years later, that's near to St. David's uh, road. There was also some steep slope disturbance that required. The board supervisors to grant conditional use approval. So I'm going to have Brett review that in detail, but uh, just to be clear. We did not make the application initially because uh, Chester Valley did not uh, think that was necessary. But we are, are in agreement with the township engineer and we will be making. A conditional use application uh, so that uh, if and when this gets in front of the board supervisors, they would not. Uh, only be, uh, we would not only be looking for them to approve the plan, but we would have a conditional use hearing. Um, and demonstrate to them uh, essentially that we're taking all engineering measures uh. To uh, to get the conditional use um, approval. Alright, so with that, uh, Brett, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, good evening. Um, what I handed out to you actually is a draft of our response letter back to the. Township engineer, which incorporates his comments and, and reflects our responses. Um, I will start out by saying most of these comments are, are will comply. Um, I don't know. Correct or wrong, but I don't know that they were that significant. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things in here that. Um, we know we have to do and we will be doing this if we move forward. Um, there are a couple of comments that I think as uh, as Mark pointed out that we wanted to. Go over with you. I think the first one would be uh, his zoning comment number two. Which relates to the uh, conditional use requirement for um, our proposed stormwater management system. Um, which would be placed in an area of natural steep slopes. Uh, they are slopes that are fifteen to twenty-five percent. Um, this area is relatively small, isolated, uh, steep slope. Do you? You have that, that plans? But what happens is the, the stormwater management for the pool relocation ends up. Encroaching into this area of uh, steep slopes. And um, the steep slope of the stormwater management is a permitted use by conditional use approval. Um, but um, as I say, we didn't uh, we didn't know that we would be, you know, because it's underground, we figured it would be okay without the conditional use, but. We concur with uh, Eric's interpretation that the conditional use is needed. As Mark said, we will be submitting that. You can scroll down. Probably want to be reading. Uh, there we go. That one right there. Okay, if you scroll up just a little bit, you, you'll see that on the um. On the right-hand side of the image there, you can see that uh, that rectangular shape that Mark is pointing to. That is our underground stormwater management set. Um, and you can see the, the two gray areas. Um, at the, at the upper end of that are the areas of steep slope. Uh, we've been approaching into. So they're relatively minor. Um, I don't know that we have much alternative in terms of relocating that because if we slid it down the slope, we're getting into the existing woods. Um, and we'd be taking out the trees and felt that it was better. Put it here. Uh, yes, we will be disturbing the steep slopes, but because this is an underground structure. The slopes will essentially be going back in almost the same, same configuration as they are now. Um, as you can see, I mean, it just follows the general slope of the property. Um, so we're going to try to reestablish that at the. Construction. Um. Any questions on that item?
No.
Um. As I say, everything else, oh, the one other thing that I did want to, want to bring up actually came out of the subdivision land development comment number one. Um, there was some discussion in uh, the prior meeting about um, some light intrusion that was occurring. Uh, from the racket center um, to um, I think properties. Uh, and some concern there. And I know I had a conversation with uh, the township arborist, John Osbeck. And what we are proposing to do is to take the replacement trees that were required to provide. And to supplement the buffer. Yeah, if you could scroll down, keep going. There we go. We'll scroll up just a little bit. That would probably be the best. Yeah, you can, you can see that we're installing a, a new paddle ball court um, at the, at the upper uh, the, the top. Box on the paddle ball court. Yes, right there. Thank you. Uh, that's a new paddle court, it's one that's closest to St. David's Road. So what we would propose to do, uh, just as a little backup background. While there is vegetation along St. David's Road is relatively all tall trees. Um, there's really not much in the way of understory plants or evergreen material in there. So uh, conceptually, I'll have reviewed this with, with John. And uh, what we're going to be doing is taking our replacement trees and concentrating them up into that area. So that we can uh, try to reestablish some sort of understory to help uh, shield the uh, the lights that are on the uh, existing and. Proposed paddle ball.
Are you adding lights also?
Uh, the paddle ball court would, would be, would have a light.
And are, are you going to use the lights that focus down? As a similar, I think we had an application a few years back with the football fields in high school.
Yeah, these, these are basically along the perimeter, based on what's out there. These are along the perimeter, perimeter of each court. And they shine directly down and they're, they're relatively wooded, so you won't see the actual fixture. But they, they do light up.
Well, they're shielded on the side.
Yes, as I say, that, they've got a pretty good cone on them. So as I say, that fixture is, is embedded pretty far up into the fixture itself. So uh, you, you, in a sense, they're shielded. So. But again, just to supplement that, and that's, I think, what the, the graphic I had uh, handed out, which would show is that uh. That we're going to be supplementing that landscaping in there. Um. As I say, I think the rest of the comments were really all will comply. There was nothing. Um, nothing in here that we didn't see that uh, there was going to be a problem. Uh, we got a review from the fire marshal as well. Um, and again, those are all uh, will comply. As I think he wanted us to. Uh, show the location of the underground utilities going to the Belmont building, which we will do. Um, also, he wanted us to sprinkle a little bit of expansion of the Belmont building, which again, we will do. And uh, he wanted us, he wanted to post the driveway as no parking for fire lanes. Um, that actually I think is there. I know there's a couple of signs, but we'll work with the fire marshal to make sure that. Um, what is out there is enough for what he feels is necessary. If not, we'll, we'll supplement him and add some more.
If you have some will revise as opposed to will comply, is that just? Linguistically, he's asked for something and you'll, you'll do that revision to accommodate.
Yeah, I mean, it will comply, sort of is like, okay, we, we, we missed that, we'll revise. Means he came up with something that. Wasn't consistent and we'll have to revise the calculations. Mostly it's the calculations, I think, that we'll, we'll revise.
Okay.
Let me understand uh, the, the purpose of you coming here today. Now, your, your response letter to uh, Anoni's letter is dated today, so I guess Eric will have a chance to review it, right? And then. So what's the next step? Eric will have to, okay, right? After you read the letter.
Well, that's, I mean, this is, they're, they are seeking, um, I think they're looking for a preliminary final. Uh, land development application is what they've submitted. Um, so at, at your discretion, either um, if, if you're so inclined, you can.
So basically, as long as everything is okay with you, with the fire marshal, et cetera.
Right, if you're so inclined to make a recommendation on this plan, you can make it a condition to comply with the, all the comments of the review letter and I would. Uh, you know, have a resubmission and they'd have to work through all the comments. Yes.
Hmm. And then one of them says, will be provided in a future submission? That's number four on page two. Yeah, that's, that uh, Eric is looking for a structural design of the retaining wall. I mean, we'll engage a structural, we're not structural engineers. We'll engage one and, and.
That'd be a normal course of uh, going towards construction, you've got a structural design plan.
So is it clear the conditional use approval will be required or? Okay, so you, we would, they would come back here for that? No, no, I mean.
Supervisor.
Supervisors make it, but I thought that in the process, we had that as another matter. Or we did recommend approval of it.
Yeah, conditional use.
Right.
The conditional use has to come back here?
Correct, conditional use applications do come uh, through the planning commission.
And, and if I might, I would just, I will just say this. Um, so we would respectfully request. Uh, a recommendation of approval, preliminary final approval of the phase two plan. Uh, only because I think we're point engineering wise, where I don't think anything's really going to change. On the layout. And to be clear, we're going to be back here in front of you and, and probably next month. Um. To seek your recommendation with regard to the conditional use application. We haven't made it yet, so I don't think it's. I mean, if you, if you all, I don't really know if you can do it. If you want to say, well, we really leave it to the board supervisors, you've got a recommendation and we can have Brett. Talk about it, but I'm not really sure. I don't want to put anybody in a spot. We're, we're in a position where, as you probably guessed. Brett is going to need several weeks to revise the plans and submit it back to the township. Eric's going to need several weeks to review it. So we are a couple of months away. At a minimum, it seems to me from being in a position where the plan would be fully engineered. And so we will use that time. To make a conditional use application and we'll be back here um, seeking your recommendation. And then obviously, we'll need a full hearing in front of the board supervisors, which would likely be the same night. That they're ready to, to consider the preliminary final plan.
So I'm a little confused, excuse me. So if you need time to uh, complete the conditional use application anyhow. And there are things to uh, revise, change, correct, whatever on the land development plan. Why not use this time and then? Come back with both application at the same time that we can handle. Then the plans will be completed. I, I don't see the benefit of approving uh, the final plan right now before everything is completed.
So the, the answer to that question is, uh, you're right. Um, I, it's always good just to tell your client that you've made.
Yeah, I think the, the show of progress probably to a certain is probably about it.
But if, if the planning commission is more comfortable waiting. For the next presentation, because we're going to have one anyway. We have, yeah, no objection, just trying to move it along.
I think so, isn't it?
What is the standard, your understanding for the standard of combined preliminary and final? Why? Why not get preliminary and then come back next month for final? What, why is it? That it's always done or always requested both at the same time?
Well, it's not always, but it's typically, I would say in my experience, right? I can only speak from my experience.
Um, which is a lot.
Or, yeah, for, for projects. Of this nature, meaning a single uh, something that is more discreet. We're not. We're not developing all of Aronim. We're coming here with an expansion. Um, if you are talking about uh, one Chick-fil-A or one McDonald's on a corner somewhere. Uh, it is frequent that you would ask for preliminary final because you don't want it to last forever and the engineering issues can all be handled relatively discreetly. As opposed to, I would say, a two hundred lot whole brothers subdivision. Which might go on for months and months and months. And at some point, you're far enough along with your engineering that a preliminary plan is, is appropriate. So I would say it's really just a little bit about efficiency. Uh. Uh, but to Mr. Guy's point, we're going to be back here anyway. So um, if that gives us an opportunity to further along the plan. Um, and that makes the planning commission more comfortable, then we're. We're fine.
I think so. The, the idea is, of course, we all understand that the purpose is not to delay. But this will give an opportunity to uh, complete everything and have a, a, a complete set of plans that we can. Uh, comfortably uh, addressed and, and I'm comfortable with.
Uh, your, your non-action this evening will, will ultimately not delay uh, the phase two project.
Any public comment? Name an address, please.
Hi, I'm Alex Skukas from thirty-three Dunmining Road.
Hi, I'm Alex Kukas from thirty-three Dunming Road or also nineteen Paper Mill Road. Which is the back end of my property, I was here at the prior meeting as well. And if you could bring up the screen that you just had up before with the spreader. I'll explain again, you know. This is a nineteen thousand square foot impervious addition that they're doing. At, at Aronim, and I'm not here to object, again, I'm just here to. I want to make sure this one issue gets addressed. All nineteen thousand square feet impervious. Rainwater is going into that spreader. And all of the rainwater coming out of that spreader goes down a very steep slope. And the gentleman there referred to these gray areas, he said, those are. A minor amount of steep slope there, just a little bit, yeah. But beyond that spreader, it's a very steep slope and a lot of it, and all of it goes down to Paper Mill Road. And goes to my ponds. And I just want to ensure that all of that rainwater. Is coming out of there, that is neither increasing or decreasing. What's coming down the Paper Mill Road. I noticed that in the materials for this meeting, the environmental advisory council. Said that they're using turf grass, which is a poor job of infiltrating stormwater. And will discharge rainwater runoff to the Paper Mill Road neighborhood and properties. This is an area with a history of flooding during heavy rains. And that's my property that gets fed by everything coming out of that. And I just want to make sure that these gentlemen have addressed that. At the last meeting, they took my name and number. Nobody's contacted me, and nobody's been on my property, I've had nothing.
Mr. Kukos, what's the distance between? That spreader and your property?
No idea, it's, there's. One more property, this. Spreader will be at the top of the property owned by Mr. Eckert and.
But we can go back to them.
Ms. Weber.
Use the first page.
So it's probably. I don't know, let's say, yes, a hundred yards. Maybe less.
I was just, I, I think I would give an opportunity to the engineer to drive the stormwater line, and I say that because. Even one of my comments, they're currently that the, this area of the property has missed from water management facilities that exists. Which they will have to be installing them and. Even more so, there, that area which is down the slope of where, where you are, and knowing the existing issues. The code has a, it's a peak rate reduction, so the amount of stormwater they're going to be allowed. That they have to control, the amount of water that's coming down. Actually has to be reduced from the current site, from the current condition. So maybe you can elaborate what how your design is.
That's no good either.
Yeah, less, less water, so that, so like right now, if there's a certain amount of water coming off of their property. They have to, through the stormwater facilities that they're going to install, it actually means less water will have to flow. Like, you're not going to get that shot of stormwater.
Amount of water overall, what's important is that you do not reduce the amount of water that goes into those ponds.
Now, what I.
Let me finish, those ponds border up on Paper Mill Road. Those ponds, the water in the ponds hold Paper Mill Road. Okay, if they start reducing down the water in those ponds. Because they're sending less down, so, and I know that they are. Just want someone to look at this, then you're going to have a problem picking the river.
Now, let me, I'll rephrase it, the. The rate of when you have a storm and there's that rush of water, that's the part that we're controlling, that they're going to have to control. So you're not going to have, there will still be water continuing to move naturally. But you won't get that rush that comes off of the surface and down the slope.
And have you, just to check, have you checked with George on that one culvert that he's always cleaning out?
We, we did discuss it briefly, yeah.
So as long as, you know, that's my concern, that we don't have more water or less water on a natural basis coming down. That's what, because I am going to get all of it. All the breaks in my pockets, so, and as long as they control the sediment. At the end of that. But, oh, this, this is a good picture, but it's this, there's a line going right there. That goes, and it curves around here. That little line I draw on the Weber's property is that stream and all of that comes, comes in there. And it's sediment comes through there and fogs up the pipes, and I just was hoping that they could. A, when they're doing construction, make sure that nothing's coming down that hill sediment wise, and then once they're done. That it's not just stops in the spreader. You know, there's, there's more that happens. Beyond that spreader, because that's the steep slope right there.
I have a question here for actually for what, but. Since the water from the spreader goes down to Paper Mill Road and through. Couple of properties, this gentleman's property and another, another one higher than him, right? Did you or did the applicant obtain an easement for maintenance? That route of the water to, to repair any erosion that is caused by that? By the concentration of the water?
Well, in, actually, what happens is the stream that. Is going through those properties actually is on Aronim's property. So the conservation, I know we ran into this with phase one. Conservation district, as long as we're connecting and discharging to a identified water course. Then that's all we need to do, so we're not just, even though we're discharging, the discharge goes across to other properties. We're not obligated to get any kind of relief.
Yeah, I, I kind of heard from you, as long as the water runoff runs into a stream, it doesn't matter if we doubled it.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I kind of heard that.
No, we don't have to get a, a, any, any easements or anything like that.
Let me understand, the, the stream is downhill from your level spreader? And then the stream is what goes into this gentleman's property, not the runoff. From the spreader to the street, am I right?
But the streams on his property or your property?
Both.
So it's on both?
Both, right, so that, so I mean, I, I, I understood the question to me, do we need an easement? And the answer is no, we don't, because we're discharging to a water course that's on our property. And once it's in the water course, then it flows, flows along the water course. But the answer and to, to supplement what Eric had said, yes, our rate is lower. Than what is today by, as required by the ordinances. Now, the volume we're reducing is the two-year volume, again, required by the ordinances. The rest of the volume is discharged, but at a reduced rate because it's being stored in that underground bed. And then released at a controlled rate.
Is there any evidence of erosion in that? Location now?
There is some and it's being remediated, but.
That'll spread it out horizontally?
Not this one, but actually, when we did phase one, there was some, some areas. That we, we needed to go back and repair, and we did that. Over the court, club is in the process of going.
That, that'll hopefully address some of the concern with sediment reaching, ultimately reaching the pond in question.
It should, I mean, I don't know where the sediment is coming from. I mean, there's, I mean, as I say, once it hits a stream corridor, I mean, you could get erosion along the stream corridor as well.
Oh, understood, I, I was just asking is if there's any physical sign on the property today. That's causing erosion to get to the pond?
Not a significant amount, I'd say the, the area we saw, because we, as I say, we, the conservation district asked us to, to follow the course of the water. As it went from the level spreader in phase one down to the stream, we did that, so.
I just have one other point of clarification, but Mike. Did you say that you're, you're going to follow the conditional use application for the encroachments in the steep slope? With regard only to the stormwater management facilities? Because I'm, I'm just looking at the grading and utilities plan, there's parts of the concrete decking. And things like that, and also it noted is the Belmont expansion that appears on both sides being areas of steep slope?
Correct, we've, those, those slopes we've interpreted to be manmade and I was going to, one, one of our comments is that. We're going to work with Eric to confirm that those things are in fact manmade steep slopes.
Yeah, but that's a good point, in fact, I mean, before we make the application.
You're going to confirm that?
We'll confirm, and then we will make that. Non-manmade.
I didn't clearly address is that this is steep, this is manmade, right?
And again, the overall picture here is that that is a. For, I don't want to say it's technical, it's unearned, but Brett said temporary construction and then covered. Regraded, seeded, resided. So it looked like it would not disturb. Structured. As we move forward here, Kurt, to our, through the agenda, maybe before you come back to. Connect with the adjacent owner of the property to make sure any needs are met as you guys are coming back for approvals anyway.
I think this is the subject of the conditional use here, one of the standards for approval for the conditional use is whether runoff affects adjoining properties. So that, that's something you'll have to demonstrate as part of the conditional use.
And it's right here, so that'd be the only feasible, feasible or practical location, not going to read them all, but. Surface run, runoff of water shall not create able condition. Burden of Aronim, who would capable engineer Brett to demonstrate that. Planning commission for recommendation.
Was that the feeling of the board to?
So, do you want preliminary tonight or?
Or are you coming back?
Yeah, I think they said they'll come back.
I'm a comeback.
It would be, again, nice to be able to report to the board of our objective, we've made in progress.
I have no issue.
Is this what you asked, do you?
Okay.
I'll go for preliminary approval of, of this land. Subject to the compliance and, and subject to.
I just want to make sure.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to make sure, before you go forward, if you get preliminary here tonight, you would. Actually file then for a new application for final, which would actually then increase your cost. So you may decide it's better not to do that, but it's up to you.
Thank you, he's very smart.
Steve, you're a good neighbor. Steve, you're a good neighbor.
We'll, we'll see you in a.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hopefully, hopefully, that's what we have to see, but you know, Brett got a line of plans, he's got us following.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is.
Been a while, welcome back.
All right, good evening, Greg, Greg Adelman here on behalf of the applicant. Hey Brett, how are you, we can see you, it's been a while. Sorry, I haven't seen you in a while, everybody good? Well, you know, I'm not quite as great, I'm working my way there.
Do you color yours?
No.
You are coming in with a salon, right?
I, I am. I am kidding, can we do anything about up here?
You don't ask me.
It's pretty clear.
We are live, everyone. I'm glad to be here. Greg Adelman here on behalf of the applicant, it's nice to see everybody. We are here this evening for a conditional use recommendation. Related to the Ooh La La Salon. Just to give everyone a frame of reference as to why we're here, since Shimon, you asked before, why are you here? So obviously, you all know the Ellis Preserve property is a subject to the PRD ordinance. Under the PRD ordinance, the existing structures from the Charles Ellis School. Are subject to the SU one regulations, so the SU one regulations. Permit you to reuse any historic structure. For basically any type of use, subject to conditional use. So that's how we wound up in the conditional use context here. Just by way of some more background, SAP still had ownership and control of some of the existing cottages at the Ellis Preserve in the last couple of years. SAP has been turning those cottages back to Equus or to the, in this case, campus investors entity. That is the one who's controlling this building and portion of the Ellis Preserve. So as those buildings have been turned back over, they've been steadily converted and reused. SAP had used them for beds and breakfasts related to their corporate operations. So this structure, the Mary Lion Cottage number four, which is the one closest to the fire station. Was a bed and breakfast, I believe it was eight or nine. About eight or nine units used on a regular basis for long extended stays. And the proposal here is to reconvert the building. Renovate the interior, break down the nineteen nineties demising walls. And open the space up to use the first floor as a proposed hair salon and the second floor as a future office. So we're only here this evening for the hair salon use because we have a proposed tenant. And as part of your new historic preservation ordinance. We were required to also submit a historic resource study, which we did, and we went to your historic commission. On Tuesday and received their recommendation of approval. From a historic standpoint, nothing is changing on the exterior of the building. The windows remaining the same, the building facades remaining the same. We're really just doing interior fit outs. There was one minor change in order to enable ADA access to the front of the building. So I think that's really the only exterior change. You may ask about signage, we haven't gotten to signage yet. But the signage that would be proposed here would require us probably go to the zoning board, just like every sign you do in the SU one. And it would be consistent with what's currently out there in the cottage area, so a small little monument ground sign. Pretty much having the business identification on there, we wouldn't be talking about neon lights or anything like that. So we'd be keeping with the, you know, nature of the property, consistent with what's out there for the other cottages as well. So overall, this cottage is about five thousand square feet in total. Floor area, the first floor, they're evenly split about twenty-five hundred square feet, so that's what we're looking at here. The salon would require about thirteen parking spaces. And if we could go to the second plan, the one that has the blow up. We have shaded, I don't even know if that's the shade. It doesn't, it's out, that's fine, so you'll see that there's a crosswalk that's being proposed there. Down in the lower corner, and I don't have a corner, but that's fine, right there. And we've shown thirteen spaces along the front of the building, there's another. Actually, we showed fifteen, I think, fifteen, I got yous.
And those are right here?
Right there, and then there's another eight for the future office use. Now, we don't know if it's really going to be necessary for the office use, but that's kind of how we've broken it up at this point. The proposed use will have between ten employees to start, maybe fifteen when it builds out. So we're going to be asking the tenant to park the employees up at the conference center in the rear. So the customers have plenty of parking spaces and the closest direct access to the overall facility.
And which building is the conference center?
Conference center is up a little further and the parking lot back, I don't know.
Is it the last one against the top of the plan?
No. Yeah, you'd have to go back to the other, the other plan. That's right, ballroom, sorry, I apologize, I apologize. Ballroom, the ballroom, yes, right in the backyard.
The salon, that's the wedding, the ballroom, up there is where the park and walk down.
That's correct, sorry, I apologize.
Now, the, the. You mentioned office space.
No, you can do that, you can go in.
MF six. You mentioned the office space on the second floor?
Office space on the second floor, that's correct.
It's not related to the salon, right?
Not related to the salon, it's separate, has not been leased yet, so we're just reserving the space and designating it as office use.
And how many spaces work for the salon?
Salon, we're, we're doing thirteen for compliance purposes, we're proposing and showing fifteen there, thirteen's what's required. And then we've designated eight for the upper floor, just so you'd be able to say, how does it, how does it shake out? We don't think eight will be necessary for a twenty-five hundred square foot office space, that's a lot. But in order to make sure the operations work. We're looking at moving the employees and having them park it at that other location, so that way the customers will always have spaces. It can get tight up there depending upon.
And where are the eight?
Right next to it, so you just keep going, there should be another label there.
I see one says seventeen.
So it's just, you know, it's probably a better plan, let me show you, Kurt, I won't talk. So it's just, you know, it's probably a better plan. Let me show you, Kurt. I won't talk.
Oh, I don't have any in the back here. So it's fifteen up here. Oh, okay. I saw seventeen here. I guess that's kind of sharing.
So that may restrict the use of the next building.
Right. The next building is currently vacant. So we'd have to come back in and. That's why I'm saying I don't think the eight will really be necessary in the end for a total office use there.
No more vape shops, okay?
No more vape shops. Do we have a vape shop? Two men. So the 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 eight, obviously that was what my reaction was. You can see it's starting to go in the front of the next cottage. And that's why when we come in for the office uses, we're going to have to start looking at, how does that really lay out? How many do you really need? How is that going to work? But we know for the hair salon, obviously you're going to want the customer spaces right in front. So that's why we designated it. That's how we're going to assign it. With respect to these use, we'll have to deal with it as the users come online. We have to come back in here every time because they're historic structures now. So we have to go through this process no matter what.
And the conference center is owned by the same entity? And?
Owned by a. So all the ownership is within.
And so then would the?
Just let me just back up a little bit.
I'm just thinking, you know, long term in fifteen years, conference center is owned by someone else. And, you know, are those parking spaces not available? You know, an easement or I'm just trying to.
But but all the parking is common for for the campus. And the conference center has their events at nights and in the weekends. They don't have anything during the day. So we have this abundance of spaces just a couple hundred feet away.
So you may, you may need to calculate parking sharing if if this has to be.
Well, that that that's built into the PRD ordinance, that parking sharing. And as John said, this is all subject to the condominium association. So all this parking is common in terms of the ability to access it. We certainly would have some ability to, you know, you know, with the other entity. Create whether there's an easement or maybe a non-exclusive. A license, yeah, I was going to say. One of those two documents to make sure we're keeping track of everything that's going in and out as these cottages are relet. And and repurposed.
The salon doesn't have any exclusive rights to any of the parking?
No, no. It would just be designated, you know. I don't know i- if you would put any signage there or not. You you may say, you know, available for, something we can talk about that, but. So and just to let you know, hours of operation for the salon, we're looking Monday through Friday, eight AM to nine PM with probably last clients being taken at seven PM. Saturday, seven AM to five PM, Sunday, seven AM to five PM. And Sundays is really also dependent upon special events that may be occurring. On the, on the Ellis Preserve property, where if you get, you know, weddings or other types of events.
Well, I think at least the ADA parking should be dedicated to salon because if they are occupying.
Yes, that's right. And that and that was, I think, one of the comments from Eric was about the direct access in ADA. And that's one of the modifications we made. To allow for ADA. So we will have those spaces designated. I think they are shown on the plan there as well. So and and just to give you a little background, the salon owner is here. Dawn is here and she is a new town township resident and is looking to move her business into the township. So that way she can grow and continue to be a successful operation here. And we think this will be a very successful operation. Based upon her existing customer role of, would you say, five hundred? So she already has five hundred people that is currently patron patronize her business. So we expect this to be a very successful. And a very upscale addition. And I think it's a real good reuse for the structure. Even very more interesting, you look at our historic experts opinion by retrofitting the property and actually pulling out the demising rolls. You're actually making the historic structure more attuned to what it once was in terms of its floor plan layout. I found very interesting. But I guess that's right because it was never really meant to be like a bed and breakfast with nineteen nineties demising walls. Throughout the property, so.
I've been in them there, no.
Hope your stay wasn't that bad. So we we don't think there's any real negative or adverse impact, you know, when you look at your conditional use factors here.
The historic impact statement is four recommendations for mitigation measures. They're pretty soft recommendations. It'd be one exception of it incorporates what you said about the signage, which is it'll be freestanding and will be consistent. With the existing signage, which I think is important. And I would make the incorporation of the mitigation measures is recommended part of our. Part of our approval.
And and that's perfectly acceptable. Yeah. The historic commission had the same comments. They didn't want neon signs in the windows. Or anything like that. And and none of that is proposed. And and we're perfectly fine with keeping it consistent with what you see.
Is exterior lighting existing?
Whatever is there is there now. We're not adding any new lighting to the property, so. So overall, that that's in in an overview and nutshell, that's it. I mean, you have a bunch of conditional use factors in there. I don't think most of them don't apply. This is really just a. Adaptive reuse of the historic structure on a property. And we're scheduled for February thirteenth. Conditional use hearing for the board of supervisors.
Who's who's the applicant? Is it Equus Capital or is it?
It's actually Campus Investors, something, something. I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you. Hang on. I've got my application here. Look, if I knew everyone, if I knew everyone at Equus's entities. I'd be Campus Investors Cottages LP.
Why are there?
Yeah.
It's so, it was separate.
Oh, no.
Did you ask a question or?
We're all here. So and obviously we're happy to answer any questions you might have, but I think this one's pretty straightforward. Any more question?
Nope.
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the application for Ooh La La Salon and Spa. In the Mary Lion Cottage number four. Including.
Including the recommendations of the historic.
Yeah, including, incorporating the recommendation, historic impact, where's resource impact study. Particularly, I think it was four point oh mitigation measures. In that. So the subject. Yeah, subject to final decision of the supervisors on the conditional use. And meeting other recommendations of the township engineer.
Second.
Aye.
All opposed?
Great. Thank you. It's nice to see everybody. Thank you. And it's nice.
We do the construction.